Farm, I figured that, Mel Torbrig is that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Let's do it again. We'll call the September Sherance County Planning Commission meeting in order. We'll stand and say the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The way this works is we're going to, why don't we introduce ourselves and do roll at the same time? Why don't we start introducing ourselves? Ken, why don't you go from there?
Ken Mossman, District Four, Representative.
Jason Wimmerman, District One, Representative.
Jason Crowe, District Three.
Jeff Bertram, Ad Large.
Mike Pearl, District Five.
Sean Blackburn.
Rich Blankish, Commissioner at Large.
So we'll start with item number three, as Angie suggested, because everyone's here. And then you'll do, we'll have the staff report. And then after the staff report, we'll have the applicants come up. And you can come up when they're doing the staff report and sit at the lower part of the table here. And then we'll have your comments and then we'll go through the process. So first item we have up is agenda item number three then. Dave Fahey, Haynesville, after the fact conditional use permit. Nick, I assume you're going to give that report? Oh, Angie, well, that's right. I'm sorry you told me that. Go ahead, Angie.
And I'm not, now I'm not muted. Thank you, Nick. Okay. So this one is probably familiar to the planning commission. As the background states, I'm not going to read the whole staff report. But the planning commission did hear and deny this application in August of 2019. The minutes were contained in your meeting packet. We did have discussions with Mr. Fahey the fall of the planning commission's denial. And as is typical with people wintering, we, down south, we indicated we would catch up with them in the spring of 2019. And twenty, spring of 2020, and as you know, with COVID, everything really went bizarre. So along with the fact that we were honoring property owners' respect for not coming onto their property or meeting with them due to the pandemic, there was also with the emergency order by the governor, all land use or civil lawsuits were held in abeyance, which means we couldn't really sue him and he really couldn't sue us. So we're kind of in this odd time that we've never been in on a land use decision before. So given that history, the time had passed where it was allowing him to resubmit for the same application, which is not typical. So you're not going to see this very often. So really what's in front of you tonight is the same request for a conditional use permit for the retaining walls on the steep slope. And beyond that, if there's any questions for me, I can help answer the process questions. Nick is, you know, obviously more versed in some of the technical questions. And Mr. Fahey is going to have an opportunity, I'm sure, to share his side of the story. And I'm going to try to bring up the maps on the overhead. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair, unless you have any questions for me.
Not at this point. Thank you, Angie. Let's do a identification of who visited the site. When I call your name, if you did, say yes. If you didn't, say no. Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Jason Wimmerman?
Yes, and I visited the landowner briefly on the site when he was there as well.
Jason Crowe?
Yes.
I did. Mike?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, by the way, I should mention that Commissioner Persky will not be with us tonight. He's a board representative. He's a non-voting member. He's at a county function and the Sherance County Association of Townships are meeting tonight. So that's where he's at. Applicant introductions. Mr. Fahey, you want to identify, say your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. David Fahey, 23371, 185th Street, Haynesville, Minnesota.
Thank you. And then is there anything you want to add to Angie's staff report? We did.
Okay. Did you notice in there the two pictures of the lots across the street from my property?
Go ahead. You have to talk real close to the microphone and was it on? Maybe it wasn't on.
Oh. Okay, so we're good?
Yep.
Okay, so the next page is the 2010 Stearns Flyover. And you can see that across the road, the property owner has put in an approach and two driveways that go up that pretty steep hill. And that acted as a funnel, basically. Water collected on those drives, came straight down and crossed, crossed the ditch over that approach and into my property. I've been up on that road at times when there was probably three inches of water running across the highway. So it was an out of control runoff problem. So I've been working with the local township. They asked the property owner to cut a swale in that approach. So now there's about a, I would guess maybe about a 12 to 14 inch deep swale in that approach so the water can, instead of coming across the road, can drain into the ditch and go to the west as it's supposed to. The other contributing problem is that that road doesn't have much of a crown on it. And the road actually angles towards all the properties on my side of the road. So my neighbors, if you can see Jeremy Boots, and then it's David Fahey, and then it's Tom Zender. All three of us have had runoff issues. Anytime we get more than an inch of rain, we'd have significant cuts. So since we've made that change, none of us have the runoff issues. Now, I have placed sandbags on my property because the way the road slopes down from that approach, it impacts my property by far the most. So I sandbagged that area. The township has given me the okay to go ahead and fill that area so I can put in a permanent grassy berm. Obviously, the snow plows during the winter time knock, you know, knock sandbags out. Or last year, I put in a sod berm. That worked well, but the snow plows got that. So with that change, none of the three of us see erosion problems anymore. I think we've got the runoff controlled. So that was the biggest point I wanted to make. We haven't had, you know, tons of rain this year. But when we have, it's generally been about an inch and a half at a time. And I have no issues. There's absolutely no cutting, no running, no runoff, nothing. No beach erosion. I think we consider that problem solved. So I'd like to leave the 29-foot wooden section of retaining wall in place. It is doing the job. It hasn't, it hasn't moved. It's holding the pathway in place quite nicely. It's 29 feet long. It's about 29 inches high. You can see it's pretty well laid out on that sketch. The alternative that Environmental Services would like me to do is take that wooden ramp out and put in a, or take that wooden wall out and put in a dirt ramp. And the problem with that is it'll take somewhere between five and 10 yards of fill to make that ramp happen. And to abide by the ordinance, it can't be steeper than the slope surrounding it. So that means that ramp has to go out almost to the water line. Not the ordinary high water line, almost the water line. And then there's nothing holding the Class II pathway up. There's no support for it. You really can't support Class II fill with black dirt. That area, under it now, it says unmoored grassy area. That's just what it is, an unmoored grassy area. It's well vegetated. I think the best, the best solution at this point is to leave the, leave the wooden retaining wall in place. It's a, it's a solid, permanent solution to this issue. Any questions or comments?
Not at this point. Let's go to the public hearing, open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this item or anyone online, Deb, that's wanting to speak on this property? Identify yourself, please, at this point. Is there anyone here or online that wishes to speak on this item? Item number three. Seeing and hearing none, motion would be in order? Motion's been made to close the public hearing.
Jason Crowe, seconds.
Jason Crowe, seconds. Any discussion? Not all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, public hearing is closed. No correspondence, I assume?
Correct.
And then on the site visits, there's been numerous site visits since 2016. Nick Newman's been there twice. Angie, you were there most recently with Commissioner Mergan on July 23rd. So there's been multiple site visits. At this point, members, are there any questions to the applicant?
Mr. Chair, Jason Crowe, more of a comment, and it may turn into a series of questions. I struggle with this one for a few reasons. We're put in kind of a lose-lose spot to vote on this. Being we've already rejected it or recommended denial once. And really, nothing's changed. And I appreciate the background on the drainage. It doesn't necessarily change the fact that this probably wouldn't have been approved as it stood in the first place for the same runoff issues. On the other side, to undo now what's been in place for a couple of years doesn't exactly help the water system either. So how do you, puts us in a spot where, you know, we're creating a weird precedence. But it also doesn't necessarily make sense to tear everything up and now just create more of a sediment issue. So it's a tough spot. All this stuff ends up being a negotiation. One of the things that I was thinking as I was reviewing this project would be to expand. I know it's an unmoored area, but to actually put in some additional deep-rooted native grass systems to help stabilize that entire hillside more so. It's not what's there today. But a thought that I had to compromise here is to fill that entire grassy section. Everything, there's, there's kind of the two tiers there. And near the oak tree and then everything towards the lake with non-mowed vegetation as a way to stabilize that. And it's a thought I had. I don't know if the applicant's open to that as a potential solution. But that was my opinion or thoughts.
And I appreciate that, Jason. And obviously, as we all know, it's not something we're going to negotiate. We're going to have the discussion. And the option is you either comply with what staff and we think or then we vote accordingly.
Well, and true. And so I guess my point would be this would be a condition. If there's any kind of approval, it would be a condition of approval if we were to go that route.
And, you know, for me, that makes perfect sense. I do want to ask Angie and Nick, or the both, your recommendation that the wooden that comes down and gets replaced. I mean, obviously, you didn't just pull that out of the air. Share with us why you feel that way.
Mr. Chair, maybe Nick can correct me if I'm wrong. But my understanding was that was one of the ideas that were discussed at the original public hearing at the planning commission. Nick, unless you remember something different?
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, so just to clarify, why, so the alternative of removal of the wall?
Correct.
Where that came about? So that is just because when that's added, it extends it beyond the scope of the minor permit and becomes a major permit. So as a way to not have a conditional use permit, removing that and kind of working within the confines of a minor shoreline permit wouldn't require the application to be in front of you today.
Okay. So and obviously, the fact that it's an after-the-fact permit complicates it as well. Instead of working with staff, everybody prior, designing something that was, fits into the ordinance and that kind of made it awkward as well, so.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Ken?
I talked to the owner for a little while. And from what I understand, this was not meant in any way, shape, or form a way of stopping water or whatever. He wanted to make a handicap accessible way to get to the beach. And from my looking at it, I don't know any other way you would go about making a handicap accessible way down to that beach. And I just started thinking, you know, we've given permits to people in old buildings, 50, 60, 70 years old. What's the first thing they have to do? Make it handicap accessible. So here, this is really the first person who's come along with a steep bank like this and wants to make it handicap accessible for relatives that are in wheelchairs. And after we talked about that, I thought, well, he's got the French drains in to help drain. How else would you go about it? I said, the only other thing you could do is you'd have to put a, some kind of a line like a, at a ski resort or something to take the person down. Otherwise, how would you get a wheelchair down that hill safely? And I guess that was my thought. After we discussed that, I thought, well, this whole going back and forth makes a lot more sense now. And I guess that's all I have to say on the subject.
To that point, Mr. Fahey, when you bought the property, because you just bought it recently, the relatives or the people weren't handicapped, they became handicapped between the time you bought the property and when you constructed the, the project?
No, no, the relative has been in, has been handicapped for quite some time.
So when you looked at the property, I guess, with that concern, I've looked at a lot of properties and I've not, not bought a lot of properties for a variety of reasons. Did it occur to you at the time that maybe we shouldn't buy this?
No, not really. The property fit, fit, really, I checked all the boxes, fit, fit the bill perfectly. The only issue with the property was trying to have a, some method to, to get disabled people down to the beach. And I've spent, out of the last eight years, I've spent six of them in a wheelchair with a walker or in crutches myself. So it's not just for relatives, it's also for me. And I'm glad that Ken mentioned that this project doesn't have anything to do with irrigation or is trying to stop runoff or re-divert water. Water's been running down that hill for 100 years. Or at least whenever they plowed that road in there, behind the house, 185th Street. So it's, my sole purpose with this was to provide a wide pathway that I could walk instead of having to do steps. I can do, I can do walking on level or close to level surfaces much better than walking on stairs. As far as the, the, Jason's comment about deep-rooted vegetation, I don't have any problem with putting deep-rooted vegetation in underneath the lower leg of that pathway. But would like to draw your attention to a study by the University of Minnesota that says that concrete is number one for blocking or preventing erosion. Riprap is number two, and well-developed sod is number three. So deep-rooted vegetation looks better, but it's not, it's actually less, less effective at preventing erosion than well-established sod, excuse me. I can't think of anything else to add to that at this point.
Couple more questions from staff or from commission members? And then I will ask Angie and Nick to weigh in on this. So, Rich?
Yes, Mr. Commissioner, Rich Blankish here, by the way. On the, was originally a temporary wooden wall to hold that path in place. And you look at it, yes, it has four-by-fours, four feet in the ground, four feet above or whatever. But the other material is what, two-by-tens or two-by-twelves? Yep, horizontally.
Yes, the horizontal.
What's the durability of that? I mean, who engineered that to say that that's going to have a long lifespan?
Well, you know, any treated wood, I guess you have to look at a lot of different things that are held up by treated wood. If it started to go kaput, you'd have to replace it.
Well, I'm thinking there's, in the long term, there's not equal strength there versus where you have the boulders. And I'm thinking that wood wall should be replaced with the boulder construction that you have on the other two ends of that lower path.
Well, that's actually-
For long-term durability.
I agree with you, for long-term durability. And that was my first major shoreline alteration permit application was to replace that with boulders. And that was denied. So it's stable right now. It is treated wood. There's a lot of subterranean structure made with treated wood.
Who engineered it?
I did.
You did? Licensed engineer?
Yes, I am.
You are? Okay. I'm just questioning it. That's all.
That's fine.
I don't, I don't, I don't see it as a long-term solution to that embankment. I'm thinking long-term for the lake, for the property. I really believe that should be removed.
So I would like to take all of you on a tour of Rice Lake seriously. There are so many wooden retaining walls around the lake that it is unbelievable. I mean, it's, the lake has been developed for, what, 60, 70 years? You know, some things, you know, are just the way they are. I can tell you that this is solid. In two years, it has not moved an iota. I would like to put rocks in there, but I can tell you right now, I could go up and pull a couple of those boulders off and roll them down the hill. Any three of us couldn't latch onto that wall and move it. But those boulders, you can. So they look pretty, but you never see a real high boulder wall because they're not that stable. There's nothing holding them together unless you pin them individually. Again, we're only talking about a 29-inch high wall. It's, you know, it's not a heavy-duty retaining wall.
Appreciate the offer. I've probably been around Rice Lake about 250 times in my lifetime. And there's another member that fishes Rice Lake. So we're very familiar with Rice Lake and we're also familiar with Lake Cronus and a lot of other lakes. And you'll see a hodgepodge of a lot of things, some of which that were done prior, pre-ordinance, some that were done after ordinance, some that were done much like you after the fact. So, yeah, there's a hodgepodge of things going on. Any other questions from anybody?
Could I make one more statement, please?
I'm sure that won't be the last one, but the staff will weigh in too, but go ahead.
Okay. I want to be careful about how I word this. I drew out quite a comprehensive plan originally for this project. It required 190 feet of retaining wall varying from a foot for more decorative purposes to, say, three feet for the upper wall. That was my original proposal. My contractor and one of the inspectors got together and came up with this. This was not my plan. My plan was all boulders. In July of 2019, we had a four-inch downfall. And that section between the boulders washed out. I think you saw pictures of that. The contractor kind of walked away from it at that point. And it was up to me to come up with a conclusion because Environmental Services didn't offer any solution, no guidance. So that's what I came up with and it's worked quite well.
Any other questions from commission members at this point? Seeing none, Nick and Angie, I guess, weigh in on what your thoughts are.
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, so what I saw when I was out there in July is probably much of what you saw. It's a stable site now, as Jason said, two years later. In terms of the process between applying for a minor and then getting into a major and what one of our staff members and the contractor came up with, I, neither of them are here to ask that question too, so I'm not going to speak to that. But I think the department's goal is to gain compliance with the ordinance. And if that means approving it as, as constructed with native buffer planting as suggested by Member Crowe, and I actually did talk to Dave Fahey about that as well. I said that might come up tonight, so he was aware that that could happen. The other alternative to compliance would be if it's denied, then quite honestly, and Mr. Fahey knows this too, it'll be turned over to the attorney's office for, for the next steps. That's, that's our goal, is ordinance compliance.
So your recommendation would be?
Well, Mr. Chair, as you know, the department does not make recommendations for approval or denial. I'm, I'm sharing with you what I observed when I was out there six weeks ago. And what our goal as a department is, is compliance with the ordinance. And the planning commission gets to decide what that looks like for a recommendation to the board on Tuesday.
And just, I'm not trying to put anybody in the spot, but clearly, this doesn't meet the ordinance.
Well, Mr. Chair, you know, I feel like I say this quite often at this meeting, but the ordinance is what you decide it to be. It's a conditional use permit. So a conditional use permit for a major shoreline alteration is anything that is not a minor. If this was a minor, we wouldn't be here, as Nick indicated. So if the planning commission goes through the shoreline section of the ordinance and comprehensive plan and decides that you don't think that this meets the, the ordinance or the comprehensive plan, that's up to you. But I can't tell you it does or it doesn't because the whole reason that it's here is because it's not a minor. And you get to decide if it should be a permitted project or not. Does that make sense, hopefully? I see some heads nodding.
Okay.
Yeah.
Questions, members? Or else we'll go to the findings. Is there anything you want to say in closing, Mr. Fahey?
Yes. So if you decide to deny this, then we're going to be back here again in one, in one way or another. Because if I remove that wooden wall, the path is going to fall down. If I remove, remove the wooden wall and put in 10 yards of fill, it's not going to meet the ordinance as far as the slope criteria goes. It also will be an erosion hazard. So this is, you know, we're going to end up here again, or we're going to be in a lawsuit, or, you know, something is going to happen. To me, the easiest way to put this to bed, and it's going on four years now, would be to approve it and leave it as is.
Okay. And just for the record, we don't approve or deny. We recommend approval of the county board on the 21st. We'll do that. Seeing no other questions, let's do the findings. Can the applicant sufficiently document- Can the applicant sufficiently document that the alteration was done to protect water quality, improve aesthetics, control erosion, or enhance habitat? Please describe the reasons the applicant made the alteration and include documentation if available.
Mr. Chair, Jason Cron, um, you know, as we've discussed, I don't think it had, uh, anything to do with runoff, uh, or necessarily aesthetics, really about function in this particular case. Uh, if there wasn't a need to have, um, the handicap accessibility to the lake, uh, the ramp likely would've never been put in, and this, this wouldn't have been the case. So, I think it had to do more with function than other factors.
Number two, why did the applicant fail to obtain an alteration permit or comply with the requirements before committing work?
Mr. Chair, Jason Cron again. I don't believe that came up, and it's, um, i- it, it wasn't discussed.
Why don't we ask Mr. Fay?
Uh, I did, uh, I did a request, or I did, uh, pay for a minor shoreline, uh, permit. When, uh, the, uh, washout happened, then I came back to you guys and I applied for a major shoreline alteration permit. So, I have applied for both, and I'm asking again now, uh, to have this approved under a major, uh, alteration.
And then, of course, staff would say that you did the work before you got the approval, I think is what the end part of that would probably be.
That would be incorrect. I consulted with staff, uh, before I installed that, uh, retaining wall.
So, then the logical question again to staff would be then, why is it after the fact? Because the work was done without the permit, right, or?
So, oh, sorry, my screen's going weird. Uh, Dave, you may have to correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding, if, if I have it correct from three years ago, i- in 2018, when you first were given the shoreline, minor shoreline alteration permit, is there was some discussion with your contractor and staff on changing something, and by changing that something, it caused the twenty-nine-foot area in between that then Mr. Fay believed needed to be fixed in order for there not to be a problem. So, he put that temporary wall in there to stop the erosion, which I think we all could agree would've occurred over the last two years had he not done that, because it would've been a temporary solution, or it would've been basically pulling it out, and then we would've had this, this cutout right, right in the middle. So, I'm not, I'm not asking the Planning Commission to say that he tried to obtain a permit, but I think he did. The Board of Adjustment has a similar question. Did they, did the applicant try to obtain all necessary permits? I do believe he did try to obtain the necessary permits by hiring a licensed contractor and getting a minor, and then I think things went awry. That's my assessment of the situation.
Okay. Um, number three, did the applicant obtain all other requirement permits and comply with other requirements? Please identify the other requirement permits and whether the applicant obtained the permits. I think Angie just summed that up. Well, um, and Mr. Fay said the minor and the major and everything else, so I think that's been kind of answered. Number four, is the alteration in a sensitive area, shore or bluff, impact zone, wetland buffer, uh, county biological survey site, or other documented high-value habitat? Identify and describe all sensitive areas.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. It's in the shore impact zone and on a steep slope.
Five, is the alteration visible from the lake or public water? Describe the degree to which the alteration is visible.
Mr. Chair, Sean Black, it's very visible from the water.
Six, does the alteration affect the character of the neighborhood, or will it result in a substantial detriment to the neighboring properties? Describe all substantial changes and detriments.
Mr. Chair, Jason Cron, um, for someone who does spend a lot of time on Rice Lake, to the applicant's point earlier, uh, you do see, um, anything and everything on, on the shorelines, um, over the years. So, I really don't think that this is a dramatic difference than the character that you'd see in other, um, lake properties on the, on Rice Lake.
Seven, did the alteration reduce or eliminate an existing buffer between the ordinary high water level, water, and impervious surfaces, or create a more direct conduit for stormwater to flow into the public water?
Mr. Chair, Jason Cron again. I, I don't believe it, it, uh, made a dramatic change. However, it did change the water flow from what the hill had been previously. I, I don't know that it's a, in a terribly detrimental way, um, as a result of the ramp. Um, there's other things, as the applicant mentioned, and, and there are a lot of factors that impact how, how things run off. So, in this particular case, I don't think the wall makes a dramatic difference on that.
Eight, did the alteration change or damage any of the following categories? Describe the change or damage in each category, aesthetics of the shore as viewed from the public water.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. As we indicated previously, you can see it, the walls and the change from the, uh, lake site. Um, however, as Commissioner Cron mentioned, um, it doesn't overly change the character of the site, 'cause there's a lot of other stuff going around as well. So, it is visible, but I don't think it results in a major change to the aesthetics of the site.
Change or damage of the character of the neighborhood or shoreline?
Mr. Chair, Jason Cron, I, I believe it really doesn't have an impact.
Vegetative buffer.
We don't know what's changed.
Erosion or sediment control device or system.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, there does not appear to be one that was previously in existence.
Stormwater management device or system. The same. Fish or wildlife habitat?
No, Mr. Chair, no, no impact there.
Water quality.
No, Mr. Chair, no, no impact there.
Nine, could the applicant mitigate the damage or change without removing the alteration and restoring the sites? Please explain how mitigation would occur and the results of the mitigation.
Mr. Chair, Jason Cron, kinda back to my point earlier, the, the site is stabilized now, so I, I just, uh, to start pulling, uh, supporter out, um, to me almost seems a, a bigger challenge than leaving what's there, uh, in place.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, on the, on the other side of that, um, we could, the applicant could restore the site to the minor shoreline permit condition as proposed. Um, it appears the upland, um, damage that comes from excessive erosion across the road has been mitigated across the road. So, I believe he could do the minor shoreline restoration. Be an effort, it would definitely be an effort, but it could be done.
Can I jump in here, or?
Right now, it's just for us, but thank you, unless somebody has a question directly to you. Um, and then the million-dollar question, and the last one. Would the minimum benefits to the county appear to be far outweighed by the detriment of the applicant would suffer if forced to restore the alteration? Why or why not? Describe the minimum benefits and details of the detriment to the applicant.
Mr. Chair, I'll take a shot at this one, and this is, again, uh, my, my take and opinion on it. Um, I don't know that the request that is unreasonable. I, I think one of the things that always makes it tough is when it's after the fact. Uh, after the fact complicates things so much because it, it sometimes, uh, takes out the impact. But as you stated, uh, as applicant stated, um, I don't think the intent was to, to bypass the system, uh, in this particular incident. Um, I do feel that, uh, the detriment to the owner would probably outweigh the benefits in this case of, of taking out that wall. Um, that's the way I view it.
Okay. Don't see anything else, so, uh, with that, um, a motion would be in order to either recommend approval or denial of the application.
Mr. Chair, Jason Cron, one more question for the applicant. Uh, you mentioned that you, uh, had the ability now to, to make a permanent change with a berm, uh, along the roadside. Is that something you intend to do?
Uh, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, I've talked with the county about that. Uh, they've okayed it, and in fact, they have put it into their notes to actually change the road, uh, the next time the, uh, the road comes up for, uh, repaving.
Okay.
They'll actually put a crown on it and slope it to the north, so this issue goes away.
Okay.
And when you say the county, the county highway department?
Excuse me, I meant township.
I was gonna say it's a township road. Okay. Staff have any knowledge or feedback on that?
Uh, Mr. Chair, when Commissioner Mergan and I met Mr. Fay on site, my understanding is some of that work is within the township road right-of-way, um, and so it would, it would be exempt from needing any permits from, from Stearns County for alterations. But yes, working with the township is, is the appropriate step at this point.
Mr. Chair, just a question for staff. So, when we return to the, if we deny the permit and we encourage work under the minor shoreline permit, what we're looking at is removal of the, the wooden wall and a reshaping of the slope, correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, having the findings completed, a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair, Jason Cron, I'd make a motion that we recommend approval, uh, with the condition that, uh, the berm is built along, uh, the roadway to help divert water back across the road versus going into the lake. Okay?
Mr. Chair, Sean Black, um, you mean, making that fifth condition then?
Oh, yeah.
The water conditions are about water, uh, seeding and erosion control and-
Yeah.
Planting.
Oh, be, that, that would've been my condition in this particular case. Um, the, I mentioned the-
That was Sean.
Um, that's, that's my, that's the condition I was the most concerned about. If there's others, um, I'd be okay with add-ons.
Well, I just wanna make sure that we can, that we mentioned all of these conditions. They need to be included.
And there are five, then, with your motion, you're recommending the five, uh, conditions with your motion to recommend approval?
Yeah, yeah. Yep, I'm just looking at them right now, so then, yes, the additional four.
Um, is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Chair, Sean Black, for now, second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to recommend, uh, approval to the county board for their September twenty-first meeting. Any discussion of that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
Uh, the motion passes, recommend approval. I believe the only nay was Jason, we don't need to do a roll call. Okay? Thank you. Uh, do we have, um, item number one? He's online, okay?
Yep.
Item number one is, um, rezoning request submitted by Carl and Kyle Saponiac on behalf of Alois and Laura Tyson. Uh, Heidi will do the staff report.
To consider a rezoning request submitted by Carrie and Kyle Saponiac, St., or St. Joseph, Minnesota, on behalf of Alois and Laura Tyson, St. Cloud, Minnesota, according to Sections four-point-ten of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number four-thirty-nine, to rezone approximately twelve-point-one-six acres from the Agriculture Forty zoning district to the Residential Ten zoning district. Property is part of the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter lying south of Two-hundred-and-seventieth Street in Section thirty-one, St. Joe Township. So, this whole property is forty acres. They're requesting to rezone about twelve acres of it. Um, property is access from Two-hundred-and-seventieth Street, which is a township road. It's a mix of woods and wetland and tillable land. Um, there are a couple feedlots, um, where the setbacks do impact this, uh, rezoning area. Um, based on the size of the feedlots, a new home will have a five-hundred-foot setback from those feedlots. And then for the rezoning itself, um, there's a three-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback from a feedlot to a non-egg zoning district. So, that impacts their request a little bit. If you look at the map, that green line is three-hundred-and-fifty feet from the neighboring feedlot, which is the only feedlot that this setback applies to. Um, so it would be the area that's hashed in blue that meets that setback that could potentially be rezoned, um, out of what they requested. Um, so if you do move forward with recommending approval on this, then the recommendation would be to not include that area outside of that, or inside that green line. There are approximately thirteen homes and three registered feedlots within a half-mile. Surrounding area is owned agriculture forty, about sixteen-hundred feet to the west, um, is an area, is a ten-acre, uh, recently rezoned R-ten spot. The property is not within any overlay districts or areas of concern. This would allow for one additional residential dwelling on the property. The land evaluation site assessment was seventy-three-point-two-six, and St. Joe Township did recommend approval of the rezoning. And that's all I have.
Okay. Uh, members, if you visited the site when I call your name, say yes. If you did not, say no. Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Jason Wienerman?
Yes.
Jason Cron?
Yes.
Uh, I visited the site. Mike?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Okay. And staff visits were made by Heidi and, um, on August thirty-first, and Jennifer and Shelby on, uh, July thirtieth. So, there were site, staff site visits. Uh, applicant introductions, um, who do we have with us? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Jerry Tyson. So, Carrie is my daughter, and Al is my dad.
We're having a little bit of trouble hearing you. Maybe Deb can, uh, turn that up. Uh, Jerry Tyson is what I heard, correct?
Jerry.
Okay. Sorry.
Carrie is my daughter, and Al is my dad.
So, we have Jerry and Terry?
I think Terry's actually working right now. She's, uh, works for the county over at the jail, so I'm not sure she can hear me.
I think we're gonna have to have staff, um, try to get you in clearer, 'cause we're not hearing you, I'm sorry.
Carrie.
Uh, maybe keep talking, uh, Jerry, and then, um, they can fine-tune it.
Can you hear me now?
If you, if you're saying, can I, you hear me now, hardly.
Okay. Is there a phone on, Bob?
Are you close to the phone? You're not using a speakerphone, are you?
No, using my computer.
Oh. You gotta get real close. Kiss your computer, Jerry.
How about now?
That's a little better, but you're a little muffled for some reason.
Yeah, I'm in my, I'm in my workshop, so, uh, the old computer might be a little dusty.
Okay.
That's much better.
That's better, so let's go with that. Um, do you, um, just state your, do it again, state your name and your address for the record, and then you, I think you said your daughter is with you.
Yeah, I'm Jerry Tyson. Carrie is my daughter, and Al is my dad.
And you're all three there?
Uh, Carrie is working right now. She's a county employee, works over at the jail. Oh, she cannot speak right now, she's listening.
Uh, so, and then, is your father there, then?
No, he, he said he did not wanna take part in the meeting.
Got it. All I need to know is who's gonna talk, so you're it. So, Jerry Tyson's with us, and he's gonna be talking. Uh, state your address for the record, I don't believe you did that.
One-eight-two-two, County Road, one-thirty-nine, St. Cloud.
Okay. Um, do we, I got all confused now when we couldn't hear, and we did the staff report. Um, so, is there anything you wanna add to the staff report?
Um, the feedlot at Al's place, my dad's- The feedlot at Al's place, my dad's place, is no longer a feedlot.
Okay. Are we aware of that, Heidi?
I was not, I'll double check that registration status.
He, he, I talked to him about it and he said he never sent anything to say that it's not a feedlot, but it hasn't been for about five years now.
Okay, we can have feedlot staff reach out to him then.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here or online that wants to share anything about this application? Please identify yourself. Is there anyone here or online that wants to say something? I assume there's no correspondence? Okay?
No.
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I move we close the public hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, second.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded, close the public hearing. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor closing public hearings say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Public hearing's closed. Item discussion by members.
Mr. Chair, I guess we just approved one about, what? They said 1,900 feet, so a quarter of a mile away from this, pretty similar two months ago, so...
And there are a lot of residential lots just on the north side of the road, so it, it's not out of character for the, the road.
It isn't, but clearly, back in the day, this would've sent shivers through the planning commission. It's clearly spot zoning. And I'm not saying that as an anti, I'm just saying it as a real, realistically. And we did approve one that's obviously also spot zoning, but clearly is spot zoning.
Mr. Chair, how do we, you know, we say spot zoning, but we've got all these other houses around. So it's kinda, on the question, doesn't mix with the, with the neighborhood? Pretty much so.
Right. And I guess I'm going by the zoning map, yeah. So, I like the comments from St. Joe Township. One, they supported it. Two, their comments saying that they're going to minimize the egg land. If you read the minutes of the township meeting, it says that they're gonna minimize the, affecting the egg land. Avoid it all the agricultural crop area within the parcel designated building area.
Mr. Chair, Jason Crone, I also think it's pertinent that, or relevant, that this is family. You know, keeping the, the family farm property. There's, there's ways, from a succession planning perspective, to do that. And sometimes it requires rezoning or allowing people at different stages of life to be able to, to afford moving onto those properties.
Okay. Any discussion from members? Further discussion?
I would say the other thing is, when you look at the comprehensive plan for the county, this is one of those areas where, where in transition. Can you think of other townships that we've dealt with?
Okay. Okay, with that, we'll do the findings. Number one, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance, why or why not?
Mr. Chair, I think the intent of obviously having agricultural zoning is to, to prevent. What you brought up earlier is, is spot zoning. In this particular case, not only is there a little bit of a precedent set in that neighborhood already, there, this is also a family situation in, in making it possible to keep the, the family farm in, in the family long-term, potentially. That wasn't discussed, but it could be implied.
If our friend Marcus Miller was here, he could see, he could represent it either way. Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? List the sections.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. I believe it does. Under the Agricultural Rural Area Natural Resources Overlay District and under the Comp Plan Goals and Objectives Under Living, accessory dwelling unit policies, which is supportive mix of housing that are appropriate for each zoning district, as was stated by several other members. The potential for keeping the family on the farm is a continuation of the potential sustainability of the farm. So that would seem to support that mix.
Number three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood, why or why not?
Mr. Chair, Jason Crone, as previously mentioned, there are a handful of other homes in the area, just across the road. So it is pretty consistent with the way the neighborhood is, is currently set up.
How has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated ordinance will be satisfying?
Mr. Chair, Jason Crone, again, and I would go to the comments that were made by the township in, in their review with the applicant and the house, the layout of the, the building design was, was intended to take the environmental considerations into effect. Those were some of the comments from the township, and I think it's pertinent in this case in trying to meet some of the sensitivities of why the ordinance exists.
I think we have number five, everybody's got it in front of you. Other issues pertinent to the matter? If I'm missing some, say something. The township input, we received that. Other than that?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Nothing applicable, I don't believe.
Just the one piece of information by the landowner that the feedlot has been abandoned and might be deregistered. So we might not have a feedlot concern.
Got it. Okay. So with that, a motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Recommend?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, second.
Okay, motion's been made by Rich Blankish, seconded by Jason Wienerman. Recommend approval to the county board for their September 21st board meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number two, conditional use permit application submitted by JK Landscape Construction on behalf of Nicholas Anderson, Arden Hills. We'll get the staff report.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, this is a conditional use permit application for a retaining wall in a steep slope area in the shore impact zone. Topography on the lot is a steep slope across much of the lot towards the lake. Previous lot coverage is well below the 25% on the lot. Soils are potentially highly erodible, but there's no active erosion on the property currently. The vegetation meets the upland vegetation score minimum requirements. The shoreline vegetation score needs a little bit more, but the application addresses some of that in what their proposed planting. Action of the sewage treatment system show that the system is compliant. Rob Spitzley in our office did an initial site visit with the contractor this spring. Essentially, this application as a conditional use permit, as a major permit component, is, is the retaining wall that's proposed within the shore impact zone. This is replacing a, a number of other walls that are failing, failing timber walls. So the new wall would be a 29-foot long at four foot high retaining wall. It's about 13 feet from the water. I did list other components there that can be covered under a minor permit, so those aren't really of, of issue in terms of the conditional use permit aspect. But the, a lot of the retaining walls will be removed that are, that are there currently. Some, about 20 cubic yards of dirt work, some riprap work and in-ground steps. There's five proposed conditions if recommended for approval. One of them does include the native buffer area as proposed in the project, which would bring it well above the minimum requirements for the shoreline vegetation standards and is a positive aspect to the application. We did have SWCD comments on it. There were no other, no other correspondence other than from the Sauk River Watershed District just stating that they would need to be in touch with them for possibly a general permit, so...
Okay. Members, if you visited the site, say yes when I call your name. If you did not, say no. Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Jason Wienerman?
Yes.
Jason Crone?
Yes.
I visited the site. Mike Grell?
Yes.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
Yes.
Okay. Applicant introductions, please state your name for the record and also Jane Kay. You go first. Name and address for the, make sure your microphone's on and talk real close to it, if you don't mind, please.
Dr. Nicholas Anderson, 1233 Carth Lake Drive, Arden Hills.
Jerry Cohen's JK Landscape, 19512 Hubble Road, Clearwater.
Thank you. Anything you wanna add to the staff report?
Yeah, so basically, what Nick was, realistically would like to do is, is quite a bit more than what is proposed here, but he is, based on the newer county requirements, he's, he's come to terms with scaling his project back. And we designed this project to meet the county requirements as far as the planting buffers and so forth. We did, or Nick, I should say, we, we talked about having the, the retaining wall flat area where the existing railroad ties are now. Reason it's moved where it is, the biggest reason was when Rob was at the site, he said that the existing railroad ties do not meet the definition of a retaining wall. And I know Nick commented several times here that those are retaining walls. Rob said they're not, based on the way they were installed or the way they appear now. So we couldn't replace...
Just to clarify, I'm, I'm not saying that those are walls. Only, the only portions that are, are walls are by where that platform is. I did talk to Rob about it too, and those single high or too high aren't considered walls.
Yeah, the railroad ties stacked on top of each other, setback, much like a wall, but they're not a wall.
Yeah.
So we wanted to replace what was there, but since it's not a wall, we couldn't replace what's there. So we shifted gears, we talked with Rob on site, and we thought, well, the area we're proposing the wall now is a lot, it, it's the most gradual slope on the whole lakefront. So that's how we kinda chose that spot to try to keep it as less invasive as possible, I guess. And then planting the whole other area where the ties would be removed. So if you guys saw that, you saw how much of an eyesore that is and just kinda wanna get that all cleaned up. So I don't know if Nick wants to add something to.
Okay. Did you, I guess, I don't know if Nick should respond or Jerry or both? Jerry, Greg Berg's comments, especially item number two. Just, what's your reaction to that? Maybe Jerry, why don't you go first?
I haven't seen that comment, I guess, at all, anywhere.
Can someone, yeah, it's up there now, but can, for practical purposes, can you give this to him? Well, I highlighted mine. Number two, I guess, is just, I just want the reaction from Nick and from you. Greg says, "Does not appear to address any erosion control or natural resource issue. Slope appears to be stable." And then it says, "Do not appear to follow NRCS in regard to identifying a resource concern, need for implication. In addition, I reviewed section 10.214F2 and 3, and the plan is not addressing erosion problems. We're using biodegradable solutions." Now, this is dated, there is no date, so I don't know when that happened.
September 1.
Oh, there it is, Wednesday, September 1st, yep. So again, not being critical, but are you aware of the comments? And then is there something that we can tweak to kinda meet that? Nick, you didn't do a site review, did you?
I did, yeah.
Oh, you did?
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission.
Got it.
The, there's no ordinance requirement that it has to, and they can still apply for the wall. It doesn't have to directly address an erosion issue at that point. It, it's not a, you know, direct requirement that they have to, you know, address that. The, the retaining wall as proposed isn't a direct replacement of what was there because it wouldn't be feasible to replace what's, what's there. And that kinda goes along with Jerry's comment about the, the railroad ties as they are. And, and Rob had this discussion as well on site, that replacing them as is wouldn't be feasible. And this is an alternative where, you know, you're putting this there instead of what is there, even though it's not a direct replacement of what is there.
Okay. Ken?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Crone can help me with this. I, I understand Greg Berg was at last month's Board of Adjustment meeting, and he was addressing these things that he's written. And he said, "These are not a thing that he means set in stone. These are just his..." What did he say, Jason?
Well, they're the recommendations based on the soil and conservation district and, and what their observation is on the impact to the watershed. So, yeah, it's, it's not, not individual, it's just, you know, recommendations based on what they see as, as the Soil Conservation District in working or not working.
And so like Nick said...
It's not a recommend, it's not, it's not a suggestion that you should approve or not approve or do any of those things. It's just, hey, from, from the watershed perspective, this is the way that the watershed district sees it.
Like Nick said, you can still ask for it.
Again, I'm, I'm operating in my simple world. Maybe Greg should say that a little bit, you know, with a caveat in the big, you know, next time saying, "It's just a recommendation or something." Because when I see that, I'm thinking, okay, there's mixed messages here. But again, I'm in a simple place in my life right now. Okay? Let's open up the public hearing. Anybody here or? I guess, what do you call it? Online, there you go. I couldn't think of online, Jason, thank you. Is anybody in here or online that wants to say something about this application? Is there any correspondence? No correspondence? Is there anybody here or online that wants to talk? Okay? Sean moves to close the public hearing. Ken seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Public hearing is closed. Further points that either one of you wanna make? Dr. Anderson, you've been a little talkative tonight, so I, I don't wanna encourage you at all, but...
My goal is to remove a lot of these railroad ties. A lot of them are rotting. And the assumption is that if you remove them, it's not gonna cause erosion, but I would say that that probably would cause erosion. I have a three-year-old and a five-year-old daughter, and I want to make this property safe for them to, to play on. And so we are trying to make this, you know, accomplish that goal.
Jerry?
I think for the most part, everything was covered. I mean, like you said, he's just trying to clean it up, make it aesthetically pleasing, you know, make it look better, get that garbage out of there and just make that small area usable for play. You know, and that's what they bought the property for. So I think it'd be a good thing to get rid of all those railroad ties.
At the beginning, you said that Dr. Anderson came to terms with what he could and couldn't do. I hope that you and staff were part of that, coming to terms with what he could and couldn't do, because it certainly makes this process a lot easier when you kinda know what ordinance is and kinda what you gotta be in.
So on that note, I mean, the neighboring property has a decent amount of retaining wall, flat area, just like Nick is trying to do. That was all permitted under a minor permit, probably less than three years ago. And now with the drastic changes at Stearns County, that's not... And now with the drastic changes at Stearns County, that's not allowed. So Nick and I had first met prior to the changes last fall, last summer, probably had discussed this project. And financially, it wasn't within reach for him, so he revisited this the spring. In that time, the, it's changed, so we had to scale back and redo the plan, if that makes sense.
Mr. Chair, Jason Cronin, quick question for Jerry or the applicant. I just want to make sure I'm looking at the drawing, right? What I, what I saw is in essence that low-mo grass area and the stairs that come down. That basically is right up against the property line, right? In that area that flattens out on the neighboring property? Am I looking at that right?
Yeah, there's like a little shed or a little boathouse right there.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, question for the applicant or perhaps staff. So the railroad ties aren't formal retaining walls. The discussion here is removing a bunch of them, so taking a bunch of them out and replacing a retaining wall. It looks like you have a four-foot retaining wall here. What are we gaining? So are we losing any overall retaining wall-ish? That's like six, eight feet of railroad tie going out the bank. I mean, there's a lot of railroad ties there. So I'm wondering, are we reducing the amount of structured wall there or are we keeping it about the same? I'm not being clear, am I, maybe?
So everything in that veget, the planting area, all those ties are gone. All the railroad ties within the riprap, all the railroad ties are going to go away, everything.
Okay.
And then where those ties are currently, Connie, our designer, kind of created that bed edge to encompass all that. So that Nick is no longer mowing up to the edge of the lake. Essentially creating the buffer that the county would like to see.
Okay, thank you.
I hope that answers your question.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or points? If not, findings of facts would be in order. So if we can get the chair to do that, we'd be in good shape. Number one, is the proposal consistent with county ordinances? Specify the applicable section of the ordinance and discuss why or why not.
I don't think anybody has the. Applicable section.
Is there any trick questions? We go through this every month.
Mr. Chair, we don't have the actual reference for the ordinance, but I do think it is, as we're likely to see, less actual height in the overall process. We're actually gaining. Protection on the wall here, so I believe it is. Appropriate with the ordinance that Nick will provide at a later time.
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, in the description of the proposal, it's listed, the section's listed in there. So this would be section 10.2.14 I2.
That one.
Number two, are there any other standards, rules, requirements that the proposal must meet?
Mr. Chair, I'd recommend the five conditions as provided by staff.
Number three, is the proposal, proposed use compatible with present, future land uses in the area? Can it be separated by distance or screening from adjacent land uses? Why or why not? Why or why not? How will any scenic views as viewed from the water body, public place be impacted by the proposed use?
Mr. Chair, Jason Cronin, you know, I think it's, it is compatible from the perspective. It's making this particular shoreline property better than what it currently is. And I think anytime we can make incremental improvements, that's a, that's a great thing for our lakes.
And it certainly should make it look better than it looks today.
Spent a lot of time in that area too, by the way, from the water, so, yeah, I'll let you know.
Okay. Four, how are the potential environmental impacts, groundwater, surface water, air quality, wellhead protection, fish, wildlife for the, of the proposal being addressed?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, I actually believe they're being enhanced. The site as it currently is, is. A poor railroad tie stabilized site. If we get a strong rainfall or the site continues to deteriorate, we might see failure of the site. And creosote soaked railroad ties winding up with the lake, which I don't think is good fish habitat.
You might be on to something there, Jason. Five, how will the potential impacts of the proposal affect property values in the area in which it's proposed? No effect. Six, how does the proposal affect the general health, safety, welfare of the residents? Makes it safer for the daughters? Number seven, does the proposal conform the goals, objectives of county comprehensive plans? Specify which goals and objectives apply.
Chair, Jason Cronin. Someone else has it. I know they, they fit underneath the lake shore living policies. And that's two, there's a variety of them. I'm going to go with number two, encourage shoreline protection and restoration methods such as vegetative buffers. It's going to be replacing. There's others that pertain to, but I think that one covers it well.
Correct, there's a host of them that staff can reference. Eight, has the applicant provided financial assurance? It's not applicable. Number nine, other issues pertinent to the matter. Not really. Okay, with that, motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here, I recommend we approve the conditional use application request to the county board with the five conditions referenced in the staff notes.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that.
Made by Wienerman, seconded by Blankish, recommend approval of the county board for their September 21st board meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes. Good luck. Number four, to consider an after-the-fact request for a conditional use permit submitted by Andrew Carlson and Aaron Bell Stiegel. Nick?
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. So this item was continued from the July meeting. The applicants were instructed to reach out to a licensed shoreline contractor to revise the application. And to come back for this meeting. The applicants reached out to a couple contractors and Zach Stodansky of Lake Friendly Lawn Care and Landscaping. Submitted some revised drawings for the site. I won't go through the site conditions, we've gone through those before. I will say what had changed in this iteration of the plan. So wall three, which is furthest up on the slope. Is proposed to be removed on the site. That, that wall is about 25 feet long and four feet in height, about 88 feet from the ordinary high water level. And then. There's some vegetation that is being proposed, some dogwoods along the property line. As well as some native seed mix that was proposed. In the seed mix, that's, that was developed by Minnesota Native Landscapes. And that's listed, that's listed out in the staff report. So those were the biggest changes, was the removal of wall three. Those additional plantings and then the dogwoods along the property line. There has not been any additional correspondence for the item. And I believe that's all I have.
Okay. So members, if you visited the site, when I call your names, say yes. If you did not, say no. Ken Mossman?
Yes, I was there again.
Jason Wienerman?
Yes.
Jason Cronin?
Yes.
I was there. Mike Prell?
Yes.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
Yes.
Okay. And then the staff. There's too many almost to identify, but a lot of staff visits. Was the last staff visit, Nick, July 1st for you?
Mr. Chair, members. I believe I was out there one.
August 16th, I'm sorry.
I was out there in August, I did not list that in the staff report.
Got it. And tell me that Zachary Stodansky of Lake Friendly Lawn Care and Landscaping is a licensed contractor with Stearns County.
He is, yes.
Thank you. Applicant introductions, nice to meet you in person.
Likewise, Andrew Carlson and I live at 8157 Paget Avenue in Otsego.
You look better in person if it's a consolation.
Oh, okay, I'll take that as a compliment.
You want to add anything to the staff report?
Well, I, I don't want to rehash everything, this is our third meeting. But just to refresh, refresh some of your recollections. You know, we purchased this property, my wife and I, a couple of years ago. It was back in October of 2019. We, in the spring, the following spring, we experienced significant runoff from the, from the slope. Had several feet of water in our porch area. And started construction that summer on the property. The walls, the project, again, it grew in scope. My father-in-law is a former licensed contractor through Kraus Anderson. And just to deal with the slope, we continued to, you know, put walls up. We thought that it was consistent with what we saw in our neighborhood. And two, in talking with neighbors, they actually encouraged us because they had witnessed other properties on our peninsula losing, losing dirt regularly, losing significant pieces of property directly into the lake. So we, we, we took our steps to what we thought was the right thing, and we believe that we have improved the property. So again, this is our third time here, there's, I think that it's worth mentioning that, you know, prior to that first meeting that we had in October, the watershed specialist from Stearns, Greg Berg, was out at the property in that September. And his recommendation was to keep the three walls as they are now. We had the meeting that October, and you all wanted to see a site plan to deal with the water runoff. And we provided that, and then we had our meeting in July. And you all had asked that we get another contractor and have that person work with your staff. And that's kind of where we're at. Nick did indicate that the, the site plan or the, the plan that Zach submitted is our recommendation. I would say that is a secondary recommendation to what we have originally asked for. And that would be just to essentially approve it as it is today. Maybe it's a, it's a third recommendation, because I guess the second one would be to do as the, the engineers at KLD had recommended and provide, keep the walls as they are. And then put in the rain gardens. But in consideration of just getting this approved and moving on. I guess we're willing to remove that third wall. I don't see the great value in that, it's, it would be a costly endeavor. But we're certainly willing to put in the vegetation and clean up that slope. If that's what it takes to, to get a recommendation for approval.
Okay.
I believe Zach, our contractor's online, and my wife is as well.
Are you with us, Zach and?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay, you want to state your name and address for the record, please?
Zach Stodansky, 612 Emma Drive, Cold Spring.
And Mrs. Carlson, you want to state your name and address for the record?
Aaron Bell Carlson, our primary house address is 8157 Paget Avenue Northeast, Otsego, Minnesota, 55330.
Is there something you want to add to this, either one of you two?
Um, no, just kind of basically what Andrew had said, you know, we're kind of just willing to move forward. And, you know, we've been trying to hire the appropriate people to get this to pass. And we've kind of landed with Zach, who we feel pretty confident in and being a professional in this. So kind of hand it off to him, I guess.
Yeah, I was brought in very late in these stages of, and not here for any prior meetings. When I visited the site, they have laid sod, I know the pictures are from July, I was, they have laid sod, that's all been covered. They've done as much as they can to minimize the current erosion from previous construction. My recommendation was to remove the third wall along with Nick. I did, we did have a conversation, a couple emails sent back and forth about the site. Was to remove the very upper wall next to the garage, slope that back to a natural slope. Get some native vegetation in there growing to establish that. And then along the, around the garage as well, get some native plants and vegetation in there to stabilize that soil. And to, to hold everything in place. And then try and leave the closest two walls to the house as they are. And leave the, leave the wall that surrounds the garage as it is.
Okay. With that, we'll open the public hearing. I don't see anybody in here. Is there anybody online that would like to share something on this application? We'll open up the public hearing. There's no correspondence, Nick? Okay. Is, no one's here, anybody online?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn. I move it closed to public hearing.
Sean moves we're closed to public hearing.
Jason Cronin will second.
Jason seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, public hearing is closed. Discussion by members.
Mr. Chair, Jason Cronin, I missed the July meeting, is that the original October one? And it's just wondering if I could get caught up a little bit. It sounds like from the contractor perspective, Nick, you guys had mentioned removing the third wall as a benefit. It sounds like it's already existing and the owners would prefer it there. Help me understand that, the thinking. That taking it out and replacing it with a buffer is better than the wall already being in place.
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. So I didn't make a specific recommendation in terms of which wall to remove. That was the contractor and property owner's, you know, choice to choose that wall. I had simply relayed the information that the planning commission had relayed at the July meeting to continue to, you know, reduce wall height and length wherever possible. There was no specific guideline on which one or where that would be. But that's what they came up with, was removal of the third wall. And then, you know, replacement of native vegetation, which is one, another aspect to it that was encouraged throughout the process at both of the previous meetings.
Thank you, and then I guess I would just ask, yeah, there we go. Go ahead. Zach?
Yeah, this is Zach. Yeah, based on that conversation from Nick, the email I received from him was that the board had recommended removing walls or reducing height. We, as, from a contractor's perspective, that wall would be the easiest to remove based on how the site is set up currently. Which is why that wall was chosen for removal.
Okay, thank you. And I think, Jason, and even going back to the June meeting, if you remember, the frustration was that the wall, the entire wall height and length, you know, it was overdone, and then we said either, I think Rich and Joe measured it. It was higher than what was in the report. And then it was a combination of either lowering all three walls or removing one. So it kind of.
To reduce the overall wall height.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, you caught me up.
That's where, that's where it was at.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Looking at the diagram or the layout here. It shows a proposed wall and I'm going to call it the north side of the garage. There's like a gravel pad there, when I was walking around, I know. There's like a gravel pad there, when I was walking around, I noticed there was a fair amount of erosion along that edge of the garage. Is there a wall being proposed there, looking at this diagram?
Mr. Chair member Blankish, there is. That is also proposed as part of the stormwater control project that KLD had put together. So if you'll notice, in that plan, there's a wall that's proposed there as well to control and help stabilize where that proposed rock trench is going to go.
Okay.
And just to clarify for the Planning Commission as well, this plan would still be as part of the, of the application. So this stormwater plan would be in conjunction with whatever's approved here tonight, so.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, and that erosion that's along that side of garage too, my recommendation was to get rain gutters on that garage, and then we can also direct that water more efficiently to minimize that erosion as well.
Good solution.
Now, on that wall removal, that's not part of the conditions at all, should we list that as such, or?
Mr. Chair, that, so that's part of the plan that's in front of you. So the plan in front of you is to remove that wall and to implement the stormwater plan as was proposed at the last-
So we don't need to list it as a condition per se, got, just the plan, got it. Okay. Any discussion from members? Andrew, you want to, any final wise words?
I'll try.
The shorter the better.
Okay, well, I feel like there's no meaningful benefit for removing that third wall. And I would propose that we keep it. I guess it was my understanding that the stormwater plan was one plan and that they weren't necessarily in conjunction with each other, that it would be one or the other. It seems like a considerable amount of additional work that I, I guess I hadn't really thought about until Nick had just mentioned it, but removal of the wall and then the addition of these trenches is a lot. These are deep trenches, and it would take some heavy equipment to go down there. It's going to tear up, you know, the sod that we have, have there. It just seems like a lot, and I would really just ask for you to consider keeping that third wall. I mean, we've got the experts' statements that say there's, you know, no environmental benefit really from removing it. And to me, the conversation around removing it at the July meeting was really kind of arbitrary.
We, when we go through training, Andrew, although that changes too, but when we go through training, they pound into us, financial's not a consideration, I mean, we have to look at the overall. And I do feel for you, I said this over the last, no, this is the third meeting, the buyer beware thing, and as you well know, especially this year now, I mean, I've seen people buy lake property, and I'm thinking, if you just look at it, I'm an old farm boy, and if I look at a property, I can see that there's some problems. And again, I feel sorry for you, but buyer beware, you know, had you known that the water was going to come in the porch, you probably wouldn't have bought the property originally. Well, then, of course, now you've got the property, and then one thing leads into another, into another. So, and the wall height, the cumulative wall height, and then having it not in a bigger plan caused a lot of anxiety here. So Zach said that he agreed that that wall would be the most practical one to be removed. I don't know how much support there would be if the wall wasn't removed, the stormwater plan is a stormwater plan. So at this point, I think we're at a point where we're operating on what's in front of us, and the understanding of the wall would be removed, the stormwater plan. So I guess if we recommend approval, county board approves it, you still have the option of taking the wall down and not doing anything more or other things, but if you're going to do something, it's probably going to be what we're seeing in front of us on the plan, unless I'm missing something. I don't think I'm missing something. So let's do the findings. Number one, can the applicant sufficiently document that the alteration was done to protect water quality, improve aesthetics, control erosion, or enhance habitat? Please describe the reasons applicant made in the alteration and include documentation if available. Well, clearly it was to control the water. Based on everything that Andrew and his wife said and that we've seen. Two, why did the applicant fail to obtain the alteration permit or comply with the requirements before doing the work? I forget over three meetings that we ever get an answer to that.
Mr. Chair, Jason, I think it was miscommunication between the applicant and the landowner regarding applicant and the contractor regarding requirements of Stearns County.
Okay. Three-
Mr. Chair, I just have a question on that. Could we clarify that, was the contractor the property owner, or was there two different parties, was there only the one involved?
I think it, I think it was Mr. Bell, the father-in-law, who designed it. If I remember right, the confusion was your father-in-law, yourself, what he thought, he talked to staff. Again, I've got a file at home this thick, and I was going to bring it and read through it, and I thought, I don't get paid enough for that. So, but my memory isn't as bad as it was a little earlier, so I think that's what it was. Three, did the applicant obtain all required permits and comply with other requirements? Please identify the other permits, whether the applicant obtained the permits. No at the beginning and yes now, would that be accurate?
My understanding is that's accurate.
From a staff perspective, is that, yep, Nick's nodding. Four, is the alteration in a sensitive area, shore, bluff, impact zone, wetland buffer, county biological survey site, or the documented high value habitat, identify and describe sensitive areas.
Mr. Chair, Jason Cron, it is a, it's a very sensitive area, I mean, that's a tough shoreline and the applicant's not the only one to deal with some challenges on that shore. Over the years, we've seen a lot of his neighbors have challenges as well.
Five, is the alteration visible from the lake or public bodies, describe the degree in which is visible.
Mr. Chair, the alteration is partially visible from the lake, and I believe if we approve the removal of the third wall, that will remove a chunk additional that is visible from the lake.
Six, does the alteration affect the character of the neighborhood, or will it result in substantial detriment to the neighboring properties? Describe all substantial changes and detriments.
Mr. Chair, Jason Cron has previously stated-
That's 100%.
Wasn't sure what that was, but as previously stated, there's, other neighbors have had to do things along that shoreline to take care of some of the challenges, it's a steep shore, and the location of the highway makes it pretty tough going down to the lake.
Seven, did the alteration reduce or eliminate an existing buffer between the order, ordinary high water, level water and impervious surfaces or create more direct conduit for stormwater into the public waters? I would say no.
Yeah, I agree, not really.
Eight, did the alteration change or damage any of the following categories, describe the change? Aesthetics of the shore as viewed from the public water?
Minimally.
Yes.
Well, the wall, yep.
Wall.
Now, at the end, it won't, because it's going to be removed, but as of now, it did. Character of the neighborhood or shoreline?
Minimally.
Buffer, vegetative buffer?
Not much change there.
Erosion or sediment control device or system? There wasn't any? Stormwater management device or system, there wasn't any? Fish or wildlife habitat?
No impact.
Water quality?
Runoff.
Nine, could the applicant mitigate the damage or change without removing the alteration or restoring the site? Again, the plan takes in the bigger picture of several moving parts. And the mitigation, along with what we're going to leave, the combination, I think, meets the overall county's intent. Ten, would the minimum benefit to the county appear to be far outweighed by the detriment of the applicant? Would suffer forced to restore the alteration, why or why not? Describe the minimum benefits, details, detriment, other thing. We're leaving the walls at the higher height, we're leaving the two walls, the most important two walls. And the stormwater plan then will help mitigate any water runoff. So again, as a whole, this is the best solution under a challenging situation, in my opinion. So the findings are complete, so a motion would be in order? Well, you kind of are, but go ahead, go ahead. Right. The, and that's the watershed?
Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, yeah, John at Sock River Watershed District, he had observed the site after they had stabilized it with the sod and everything, and there's no additional requirements from them, so that's been satisfied.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so a motion would be in order?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, I recommend, I move that we move this proposal for the after-the-fact request for a conditionally-use permit submitted by the Bells on this parcel with the removal of the third wall and the condition of the construction of the stormwater system for approval to the full board.
Congratulations, I think that's the longest motion we've had since we've been in the planning session. But you encompassed everything, so that's good. Is there a second to that?
I will second that.
Okay, Richard's going to second it. Any discussion of that motion? And again, that would be for the county board September 21st meeting. No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, recommendation is made for the county board, thank you. We have, did we have minutes?
I don't think so.
I didn't see any.
I didn't get any.
Well, on the agenda, it said minutes, and I didn't get any, so we're going to skip the minutes. We'll do that, August meeting we'll do in October. Other dis- that's okay, other discussions? Two things, or actually three things, one, there's been another administrative approval of a solar application, so that makes four. This one's in Wakeville Township.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to clarify, none have been approved, they've been applied for.
Oh, did I say approved?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, just, just-
I stand corrected.
Just so we're all clear.
Right, four applications have been made for administrative approval to Stearns County. So the fourth one came in just, I got it on Wednesday, so.
Hopefully all done by Payne'sville.
No, only one in Payne'sville. But they are all over. And then there's been a discussion, we received the email from Shelley about membership of committees and everything. Well, my guess is, I've talked to three commissioners, nobody knows where this is coming from, but my guess is going to be that nobody's going to respond. So I guess I'd encourage you to respond, you know, I think there's some very telling points in there that you might want to just weigh in on. As far as memberships, does everybody know what I'm talking about? Shelley Benson sent an email two weeks ago, it's due by the 24th, if you have comments. It talks about memberships and trying to do, shorten the term of members, you know, instead of having nine-year terms, having shorter terms, and then trying to do more diversity, minorities and everything. So if you have thoughts on all that, you might want to weigh in on that. Because with three commissioners not knowing where that came from, I guess kind of concerns me because nobody knows where it's coming from, number one. Number two, when I read it, and I'm going, I'm going to do it, but again, what happens is, I submit something, and out of all the committees, board of adjustments, library board, everything else, nobody says nothing. And then these few people that have this agenda will say, well, nobody said anything, so it must be okay, we can do this. Well, when I went through the diversity, just again, take the time, can you resend that email to everybody? Sean doesn't seem, it doesn't hurt maybe to send it to everybody again. On the Planning Commission, we only can take care of our deal, everybody's got to take care of their own. But when it said things like diversity and everything, I thought to myself, okay, I did a, I drew a triangle, and I put the county board on top, four white men and a white woman. Then I did administration, top administration, white men. Then I did staff, top staff, white men and women, Caucasian, you know, all. And I thought to myself, okay, if we really want to, you know, altering the term of a commission member, library board member isn't going to change the systemic, I can't say it, systemic?
Systemic.
Systemic, that one, we don't use it at the farm very much, isn't going to overturn the overall thing. So I thought, well, this is interesting, if you want to fix something, then you got to fix it in the right places. A couple of commission members, I don't think, and did, did all of you apply for this? I did, I mean, you have to apply for it, so if people aren't applying for it, you can't get appointed to it. Well, there's a lot of commissions, committees I'm not going to apply for because I have no interest. You know, I know, I asked several of the commissioners, Commissioner Persky was the only one that I found that has appointed at least four diversified members where they're not white, male, or female members. And I served with one on the library board. So there, he, in his case, has sought out minority members and have applied to them. So just reread that, and what I would ask you to do again is, what I don't feel comfortable with is, if you guys don't respond to it, then it's being assumed that you support it.
Could I take on here?
Sure.
Sitting on the park board, we are four white males, four white females. So gender-wise, we have one of the more diversified committees. And then, because we were reviewing this at our last meeting, and this will have to be approved by the county commissioners, Joe Persky recommended that maybe we don't have him as a voting member on our board, but he would, like he is with us, where he just sits and gets live response and how we settle things. So to open up a spot and keep our numbers odd, so when we vote, you know, you don't have a tie. So we would like to add an at-large position on the county board. And then we discussed, well, when you, the county would be advertising that position, it's open to everybody, I said, I said, you can't say we want to find somebody that's a minority or anything like that, you have to say, we're looking for a person that wants to serve at large. Now, you mentioned, Joe, I know he has contacts within two different minority communities in our county, pretty strong. So my guess would be he would notify their leaders in their communities that, hey, this position is coming. If there's anybody, whoops, excuse me, interested, they need to apply. So it'll be interesting to see how the response is on that, how that position gets filled. But when you say, oh, you want to diversify, how do you do that without creating any legal problems?
And I think it's an admirable goal, but again, if you want to do that, we got to change employees. There's no term limits for employees, I mean, they stay on for as long as they want to, or unless something happens. And again, systemically, I got it right that time, we're not making the changes where it really is a public. So it's an admirable goal, but I don't know if it's changing a planning commission member or a library board member is going to make the kind of change that, again, it would help to find out-
the kind of change that, again, it would help to find out whose goal this is and where it's coming from, probably before they did anything. And then the other part of that whole thing, when you read it, is, did anybody read it, by the way? Did anybody see?
Yeah.
Ken did? Jason saw it?
I'm reading it now. And, you know, truthfully, I perused through it, and I'm glad you called it out, because as I'm reading it, yeah, I do need to respond.
Please do. I mean, again, not just respond. I mean, with comments, what they are, that's up here.
It's like you said, we've all applied for this, but that's, there remain complaint is because it's a lot of white males over 50 years old. Well, we've kind of got to a point in our life where maybe we think we've learned a little bit, and we have time available. I'm on some other committees, and it's, you have to have time during the day, you have to have the time to come. And some of these, like I'm on the extension committee. We've got people on there that are on but haven't showed up for a meeting, maybe one a year, because the meetings take place at nine o'clock in the morning, when most people are working, which makes it tough, too. And the whole thing.
This isn't unique to the county. This is something that is happening across the state, the country, or the schools in our county. And it's, it's that battle between equality and equity. And, and I know that, that comes up a lot. Equity is a very, it's, it's an ambitious thing. It's a really, really challenging thing to do without creating other forms of discrimination. And if you dig back far enough, it's almost impossible to do without creating other forms of discrimination. So, well-intended, it's a good topic to have, but it's really, really challenging to do in, in a government or a school environment without creating other injustices. Equity is fair and just, and the problem with that, or the challenge with that, I shouldn't say the problem with it, it's, it's a good thing, you want that. But the challenge is, fair and just to who? Fairness is always a subjective term, and so it's, it's a challenge. This, this will be a good topic, so please chime in.
Please read it, yep, and comment. Ken, your comments are right on.
It sounds good on paper, but you get it to work.
I hope you reply, and I hope you comment that, because that's, that's a good point. And then the other part of that was, and it's probably good that Commissioner Persky isn't here tonight, he's been kind of called out that, you know, he maybe asked too many questions on this board. I know a member of the Parks Commission, Nutrich, another member I asked after their meeting that they actually had at the Tri-County Park in Painsville, they had a discussion on that about his membership on that one, and they all said they do not feel uncomfortable with him being on that committee or anything. So I guess, tonight's a good night. If Joe's not here, do you guys feel uncomfortable that he participates in the conversation on this board, or asks questions, or does what he does? And again, if you do say it, it would let him know, and if you don't, say it, because he's kind of being called out again. I don't know of any of us that have complained.
I say, I think that's kind of ridiculous, you're going to call him out for asking questions? He asks questions, and they're good questions. He, he moves the, the investigation and the discussion along. I, and that's, that's what we were supposed to do. He wants to be informed.
The only time I find that I have problems with his questions is when he gets off the topic. He goes out to a place to look at, we're going to rezone this 40, 20 acres or 10 acres, and he's more concerned about those two junk cars the guy got sitting behind, the shed over there, that aren't part of the topic, than about that 10 acres of rezoning. That's the only time I have an issue with Joe, or else, right, like Sean said, his questions are good questions. Keep him on topic, which was, we're being told to do all the time. Don't look at the other parts.
I wanted to mention about the whole diversity conversation. The thing is, we're really dealing with an awful lot of apathy, just across the board. And, and I think in, on top of that, it's compounded by the fact that there are a lot of people who don't even know that they can do something like this. So how do we inform those people?
Yeah.
You know, that there are positions like this, that there are opportunities like this, that they can have a voice. It's just like every other thing, you know, they don't know if they're, how to, how to put their hat in the ring, how to even apply. I don't understand that. So that's a huge hurdle.
Yeah. And again, I think Commissioner Persky, to his credit, obviously has figured that out, because I think he's the only one that I found that literally has appointed four, what I would consider to be minority members, as I said, one of which I served with on the library board. And he's got some on the law enforcement commissions and everything, so, I mean, I guess he's doing that. The, so I think, I don't, again, the comment then, if it's accurate, is that we don't have a problem with Joe asking the questions or doing, again, I guess I find that odd, because when I was on the city council, I served on eight committees. Well, I was a conduit on that committee to the council. I never chaired one of the committees. I never, I was there, but I was there at all of them, so I could bring back what we discussed. I certainly asked questions and everything, too, because it's part of the whole thing. And in our lifetime, a lot of you might not remember this, a county board member, Rose Arnold, was the chair of the county board, and she chaired the planning commission. Now personally, that would make me feel uncomfortable. I don't know that a county board member should chair and/or be a voting member, so like the Parks, I agree that maybe he shouldn't be a voting member. But I think he certainly should participate, because ultimately, the county board's going to act on whatever it is that we're all talking about. But, you know, that's 25 years ago. Rose Arnold was the chair of the county commissioner and the chair of the planning commission. So that I don't think would be, but I don't have a problem. Over the years, Commissioner Lenzmeyer sat out in the audience and didn't say a word. Commissioner Burmanchuk sat in the audience and would participate from time to time. So every commissioner that's going to be on it, obviously, is going to have a different angle to it. But again, if you have a concern with that, talk to Joe or whatever, but I haven't seen it. So those are just two issues I wanted to bring up, or three, actually. Anything else? Anybody else says?
Mr. Chair, I have something real quick.
Angie?
Any takers on the Agra Tourism Extension Workshop with Commissioner Lenzmeyer and I?
Oh.
If there is, let me know. Thursday-
You didn't put a date or a day. I have, I found out through the extension committee.
Oh, did my email not contain a date?
No.
Well, I thought it was with Lee and somebody else.
It was you and Lee going off to Mora.
So, I apparently didn't send you the details that you needed. It's Thursday, September 23rd, at 1:00.
1 to 5, right?
In Mora. If anyone wants to come with, let me know. I'll, we'll pick you up and have a-
As much fun as that sounds, I'm going to pass, or anybody jump on it. One member, she said. So first come, first served.
Angie, I had considered it, but I've got one year left as a pay for, yeah, but I can't do a whole lot. We'll see.
You don't know, Ken, you may not have a year left if they do the six-year-
Thursday afternoon.
Changing it that quickly, our government process is-
I think I heard two yeah-buts there.
But Jeff, the big thing is, they don't want people to come back. Once you've been on, you can't leave for a year or two and come back again.
I wonder if it's not directed towards me by somebody, is it?
Well, my wife is-
Maybe we figured out-
My wife has done the same thing as you. She's been on almost 20 years on-
And you know who decides that ultimate, what I love? Who decides this? Any of this? Three commissioners. That's who decides it. And that's what's great about this. That's the way-
Don't ask what, three, it's just three.
It's the public, and it's the commissioners, then it's staff. And whenever you get that confused, who's running, and again, it's the public first. And, and so that, that's what's great about that. The commissioners will decide what's going to happen. So, can we get a motion adjourned? Let's do it officially this time. Sean's going to move the motion to adjourn?
Jason.
Who seconded? Oh, Rich did, okay. Motion was made and seconded during the meeting. Any discussion? If not, the meeting's adjourned at 9:04.
No, I think we sort of don't.